I call this meeting of Longdale City Council to order along with the Longdale Public Finance Authority. I'm gonna ask the city clerk to give us the roll call, please.
Okay, Mayor Protem Kearney.
Here.
Councilmember Suarez.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman.
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas.
Here.
Mayor Pauline Miles.
Here.
Everyone is present.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask Councilwoman Cuevas to lead us in a pleasure of allegiance and Pastor Jimmy Oriano from Cavalry Chapel, South Bay will lead us in a word of inspiration.
Please stand, right hand over your heart, ready, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. Thank you.
Our heavenly Father, we come before you tonight as we gather this evening for this council meeting in the city of Longdale, California. We give thanks to you and ask for your blessing to fall upon this city. Look with favor on the city of Longdale, protect its citizens and leaders and enrich our land so that we may be a blessing to others. We pray that you would be honored and lifted up in this great city. We pray that this day, the city of Longdale would be that city on a hill that cannot be hidden. We pray for each servant here today who serves as our elected representatives. We pray for our mayor, our council members, and all that serve in any type of capacity. We pray for their families, keep them safe and in a place of humility as they continue to work and move this city forward. James 3:17 says, "But the wisdom that is from above is first pure, then peaceable, gentle, willing to yield, full of mercy and good fruits, without partisality and without hypocrisy." Each day that this council serves, we ask that you give them the wisdom from above. Any thirst for power, please take away. We pray that if any fear would fall upon the city, the fear of the Almighty would be. May you give them thick skins when inevitable criticism, fair or not, comes their way. May you remind them of the goal to aim for unity, as we know what your word says, and if a house is divided against itself, that house cannot stand. Remind them each day of the privilege and honor that it is to sit in this room and serve your people, for your word says that all those in power have been raised by you but can also be removed by you. Finally, may you renew the servants' hearts of your mayor and council that they will always seek you to serve the lost, the least, and the left out among us. May they show courage to lead the city in bold and new ways. In fact, may they stand up to the challenges and things that are not of you like never before. Above all this, dear heavenly Father, may you remind them of your love, of your grace, and your amazing mercy. We give the city of Longdale to you. In your holy and gracious name we pray.
Amen. Pastor Oriano, thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate you coming down from Cavalry Chapel on South Bay. Thank you. At this time, we're gonna hear from our lieutenant Leo, our public safety report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for November 1st through November 14th. On November 12th, at about 6:00 AM, deputies responded to an assault with a deadly weapon call at 14623 Hawthorne Boulevard where the suspect ran towards the victim with a knife and then threw it at him. Deputies arrived, located, and quickly detained the suspect and recovered the knife. Based on the victim's statements, the suspect was arrested for an assault with a deadly weapon and booked at South Los Angeles Station. Also on November 12th, in late evening to early morning hours, several deputies and patrol cars were deployed in the city for DUI saturation patrol. The purpose for the additional patrols were to identify drunk drivers and arrest them before they became involved in a traffic collision with other motorists and pedestrians.
Excuse me, Lieutenant, can I get you to just pull that down just a little bit?
Sorry. The deputies were deployed during the time when drunk drivers were more prevalent. Fortunately, no drunk drivers were located during their tour in the city and several motorists who are believed to be under the influence were not and were cited for other vehicle code violations. This concludes my report and I would be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Okay, are there any questions of the lieutenant's report? Okay, Lieutenant, thank you for the report.
Thank you, sir.
Moving along, we are oral communications. Those who would like to speak to this body on the oral communications on items that are not on the agenda, we ask that you line up by the flag. When it becomes your turn, just simply approach the podium. If you would, start with your name. At about two minutes, the amber light will come on to give you the signal to start wrapping things up. As you get close to your time, you may hear the city clerk tell you that your time has expired once that green light, I mean, the red light is on. That's about first speaker.
Jerry Adams, forty-plus year resident of Longdale. I would like to address what I addressed two weeks ago, the ongoing continuous code violations by RJ building construction on Manhattan Beach Boulevard and the residential lots behind them that they also own. I contacted code enforcement a week before last, shortly after the meeting. I was informed that Craig Williams is the code enforcement officer for the area. I left a message for him to call me back. No callback. Last week, I called again. I talked to Jamie Rodriguez. She said she was sending him an email. Still no callback. Called again today. Of course, he only works Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, so he was not available. Talked to Michael Rez and he's going to, I believe, be counseling Mr. Williams on his lack of professionalism. The situation has not improved and is continuing to deteriorate from the heavy trucks that are using the driveway pan on Manhattan Beach Boulevard, excuse me, I scratched it, on Manziel Avenue, which is being destroyed. If you look, there are large cracks, missing pieces of concrete, which are a trip and fall hazard. Additionally, I would like to address a new issue, and that is the no parking signs from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM on Manziel adjacent to the RJ property, which cost the residents four or five residential parking spaces. I talked to Alex Chow over at Public Works and he was unable to find any written record of why those signs were put in, but based on his verbal conversation, it was his understanding that they were put in at the behest of Anthony's Concrete. This may or may not be true. The pertinent part here is Anthony's Concrete is no longer in business, so if that was the case, there is no justification for those signs being there. Those signs being there keeps the east side of the street open more, which encourages the illegal activities by RJ's. So if those were opened up to public park, in which they were before, then there would be cars parked there and it would be less likely for them to be able to pull their 80,000-pound trucks onto Manziel Avenue. So I strenuously request that this be examined for removing those signs and improving the enforcement of the law. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jay Gould. Everyone here knows me. I went to school with a happy, with your mom. I knew your mom for years. I want to thank Robert for calling me back. I put a phone call in for all of you guys. Thank you too, Pat Kearney, but I understand. Anyways, my concern is with what is going on with the Metro. You had a guy here that knew everything about it, Sean. He applied for city administrator. Am I not right? That other [inaudible] that you had is a [inaudible]. I've called him thirty, forty times. He would never return my calls. How disrespectful is him? Does he work for us? I'll come up there and do your job for free, but I'll make sure I, everybody that calls me, I get a phone call back. You know, it's just ridiculous that I have to come here and not have any respect. And when I got that Metro coming down the back of my back over here and you guys had him on the stick when you had that lawsuit for the railroad, for the 405 freeway, you could have made a difference. You could have said, "You're gonna do this or you're gonna do this?" And Robert Paul and Miles explained to me what's going on. This is real stressful for me. I'm close to seventy years old, you know? And when they're coming through here and threatening, why didn't we have an opportunity to buy that land instead of Metro? We've been taking care of it for the last sixty years. You know that, Rhonda. Why did the Metro get to buy the land? Right out from under us. No one says a word about that. So now we have to get on with that and do something else. You guys cannot let this Metro just run. They lie. Filthy Nazis, that's what they are. They're filthy Nazis. They lie, they lie, they lie. I went to Getty's meeting up there in LA. He said, "Don't worry, Longdale, nothing will happen going through that way." And what is it? Now they're sending out letters every single day. This is what we're gonna do. And you guys just sit here and no one's doing anything. But Robert said you are, so I'm gonna take him for his word. But when I phone call you guys and put a message over here and when I come to a meeting that tell me 6:30 and you guys start at six, that hurts. That looks like I'm getting disrespected. And do I deserve it? Maybe. Pat knew me since I was a kid. Maybe I do, Pat.
There you go.
But you know what? Rhonda, I've known your dad, your family. Your mom, we hung out for hours talking. I don't understand. This is not right. And I don't know you, but you know what? My house is right there. You guys can come there any [inaudible] you want. You wanna talk about [inaudible] here? I would rather have you tell me I'm [inaudible] than to have nothing happen.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any others wishing to speak to this body under oral communications? Seeing that, we will close oral communications at this time and bring up the diocese for any comments. Let's start with Councilwoman Suarez.
Well, I'd just like to thank everybody that came out tonight and it is important to voice your opinions and your struggles and to try and get changes throughout the city. So I know one of these is ongoing, RJ Construction, so I'm hoping staff can, I don't know how much we can disclose with code enforcement cases that are ongoing.
Right, the investigation, we probably shouldn't disclose where that is, but I do know that it's ongoing. Yes, Councilwoman.
Okay, and then also, I would like to see the record regarding the no parking signs, especially since parking is such an issue in our city. So I'll give that, maybe the city clerk can look up the history of that. And then with regards to Metro, I'll pass it along. We do have two members of this body who are serving on a committee, so I'll let them speak to what we're doing with regards to that. And with that, I'll pass it along. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cuevas.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. I do, would like to see about the no parking sign, if we could do an investigation on when and how they got there and if we don't need them, let's remove them. Also, as far as the RJ, you know, let's keep on top of them. I have seen the trucks drive by, but, you know, I don't know what we could do until the full investigation is done. And thank you to Mr. Gould for voicing his concerns. Well, Rhonda and the mayor have information regarding the Metro. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hoffman-Gorman.
Thank you to everyone that came out tonight for a council meeting and I agree with Councilwoman Suarez that it is important that we hear from all of you, regardless of if it's something good or something that we need to be held responsible for. It's always a good thing that you come up and address us. I also feel like those parking places are pretty valuable. If they had a price tag on it for, if four cars could park there, that's a really big deal. So I, along with the other two councilwomen, are absolutely, we need to figure out what was going on there because if those can be given back to the neighborhood, let's give them back. And maybe that's something that needs to be looked at in several different areas in the city on where we can decrease some of the red zoning if we've got other areas just like this. Parking is at a premium. You have to be in my neighborhood by one o'clock in the afternoon or you're not going to get street parking, so that I get. Jay, and I don't see Jay right now. I just looked at my phone. I didn't see that I received a message from him. I do know that the mayor and myself are sitting on a Metro board and I believe the last time we spoke with Metro, they're not looking to make a decision as to where the line is going until fall of next year. Right now, currently, they're conducting residential virtual and walking tours and I suggest that everybody go on these tours. They're going to walk not only what is known as the row, which is currently the rail system area through the city, but they're also going to walk the Hawthorne Boulevard part of the project and they're looking for input from the residents. We, the mayor and I have talked over and over till we're blue in the face. We want communication with our residents. It has to be. We're pretty, we're pretty pushy on that issue and they're hearing us and they recognize that that's the way it's going to be. So I'm content that as of right now, Metro has not made up their mind. My family's property is in jeopardy of it as well. I sit in the same way. I've got the same emotions he does, but as an elected official, it is more important that the right thing be done as to knowing that for the next hundred years, our community is going to have to have this thing. So whichever direction it goes, it's gotta be for the betterment of our community. That's all I have and I'll pass it along.
Mr. Protem Kearney.
Oh, yeah, I want to thank everybody that showed up tonight and spoke. I was surprised Rhonda didn't speak, but thank you. [laughing].
Thank you for being here and thank you for not speaking.
No, for being here.
Thank you, thank you for being here.
I believe Robert can maybe, you know, vouch for me. I believe that eight to four was put in because of that company, because they were parking their trucks there. Probably when the company first came there, because they were parking the trucks on the corner. So maybe we could revisit that. Where's Jay? Is Jay here? Metro didn't buy that land. I believe it belongs to the rail system. We never had opportunity to buy that property. It's always been, whoever that is.
BNSF.
Yeah. And with that, I'll say that's it and pass it on to you, Robert.
Thank you, sir. I want to thank everyone who came out tonight, those who spoke as well. Yeah, going back to the RJ Building Materials Company, so that investigation is ongoing to abate those parking concerns there. But I do want to bring to the attention that I do agree with taking a look at the parking signs to make sure they're still appropriate and to see whether or not we can free up some parking and take those signs down, allow for parking. I'm reminded of the, right in that vicinity, there's an Amco, Amco shop and they used to have, there used to be a parking, no parking in front of their shop and because there was a bus stop actually there. And when Metro discontinued the line from going down, past the Amco shop, one of the owners approached me because I just happened to be a customer and he was talking to me about it. And I looked into it and since it was no longer going to be used by Metro as a bus stop or what have you, they removed the signs and so it frees up parking. So now there's about, at any given time, about five cars parked there that otherwise was not able to be parked there because of the Metro bus line, which had very little, very few riders, by the way, which is why they discontinued it. But it didn't make sense that the sign was still there, no parking. And so when it was brought to my attention, we looked into it and found that it was feasible to bring the signs down because it didn't serve any purpose of restricting parking. So that could be the case here. It's something that we have to look at and if that is the case, there will not be a reason to continue to allow, or disallow should say, parking there. So we will definitely, I'm looking to that. But I want to thank Mr. Adams for bringing that to our attention. If it's appropriate, we definitely will take those signs down. And I agree with Councilwoman Hoffman-Gorman while we're at it, we can take a holistic look at other signs in the community that may have served this purpose. From time to time, we speak of these issues. I remember about ten years ago, we were kind of talking about the same issue and we brought to, it was brought to our attention, even though it's kind of, kind of touchy subject, but there's a number of blue curves in the community that no longer qualify for blue curves. And at that time, I knew in particular one, because the decedent was a good friend of mine and he had been deceased for a number of years, but still had the blue curve in front of his house or what have you. And it wasn't until it was brought to our attention that that blue curve is no longer needed and so they was able to bring that curve back to allow residents to park there. So that might be something we should take a look at holistically as well. Because as you know, once you get those curves in, you, at least at that time, they may have changed their protocol now. You make your application, it's approved because it qualifies, but then the person who made the, the application may have moved or for some reason no longer in the home and there's not a qualifying person in the home, even though the blue curve is not particularly just specifically for that home, but someone that qualifies at the time have to make the qualifications, have to make the applications. And there's no check, you know, years later to see if they're still a qualifying individual. And so those can slip under the system. So we'll take a look at those. Metro, I think it was last week, we gave, we gave like a brief briefing on the Metro, activities of Metro's and the progress. And I'm calling it progress because, you know, although we were principally opposed to having a Metro through the, through the community, but at the same time, we have to make sure that we negotiate with Metro and hold them accountable so that we have all the mitigation measures that we need in place should the Metro come to Longdale. Now, I'm convinced that the Metro will come to Longdale because this is something that's part of their plans. They have federal dollars that's been allocated to it as well as a ballot measure that the voters voted for. It's all about which route, whether it's alternative, whether it's row or Hawthorne and they have not made a decision on either one. But either way, we have to be at the table to make sure that we mitigate all of those issues and so it won't be one of those things that's happened in South Pasadena where after they built, built, I think it was the Silver Line, they had to come back to do all these mitigation measures or what have you and the South Pasadena had to fight Metro for those measures that should have been implemented throughout the program before, you know, instead of going back. And so that's what we're trying to do. That's why we created a subcommittee so we're in constant contact with Metro. Step by step, there's no opportunities for lack of communications a month to pass without hearing from Metro that we hear from them regularly and they hear, definitely hear from us regularly and we will continue to keep on that. And I do encourage all the residents to participate in those meetings and if they can't participate, at least let their voices be heard by sending in a comment. If you can't participate, whether it's virtually or in person or what have you, they can always make comments. And with that, I think that's all I have to add. And that would be that. I will close public comments and comments from the city council at this time and I will move our agenda to our consent calendar. We have item one through six. Well, actually, because we have seven and eight as well, which is the Longdale Public Finance Authority items. So what is the pleasure of this body concerning the consent calendar?
Are there any questions?
One through eight. Is there any, any questions or?
If not, I'm making a motion to accept it as read.
I'll second that.
Okay. You got a question?
Do you have a question?
So the motion's been made by Pat Kearney that we approve the consent calendar and seconded by Cuevas. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'm gonna ask the council, please vote on the consent calendar.
For the consent calendar, the motion passes.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Next item is a public hearing. It's a continuance of a public hearings for an appeal case regarding the planning commission's decision on case 2017 for the development of a new car wash. Let's hear from the staff.
Good evening, Mayor Pauline Miles and members of the council. I'm Jared Chavez with the Community Development Department. The item before you is a continuance of a public hearing for an appeal request, case number 2125, appealing the planning commission's decision to deny case number 2017 for a development of a 7,779 square foot express car wash facility on a general commercial zoning property located at 15413, 15425 Hawthorne Boulevard. The city manager requested a continuance to provide the city council with additional information about the economic impacts of the project. And now I will turn it over to the city attorney for additional information. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chavez, and thank you for all of your work on this over the last week and a half. I really appreciate it. Mayor and council members, as obvious, the city manager is not with us tonight. I was going to ask immediately if we could just continue this to your first meeting in December, but before the meeting, the applicant did ask if they could give you a little bit of information tonight. So my recommendation would be that you do hear from the applicant tonight and then continue the matter to your first meeting in December. Hopefully, we'll have an update on the economic development information at that time and perhaps some of what the applicant says tonight would also be helpful for your discussion at that first meeting in December. I'm here for any questions, but that's my recommendation for now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Let's hear from the applicant at this time.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Sheri Bondstall from Jeffers Mangles and I represent Tim Berger, who is the owner of the Longdale Car Wash. And we are here specifically to ask that you take some action on this project. And we specifically request that if you are going to have the matter come back before you, that you direct the city attorney to have a development agreement prepared and as part of that, we will do an economic analysis for you. We will hire whoever the city agrees to hire for this economic analysis and we will identify the tax base that could be provided with other uses on the site. And as part of the development agreement, we will compensate the city for the difference between the tax base obtained from the car wash, which we know is not the highest tax base available, and the highest and best use for the particular site. We understand that you want to do a citywide evaluation of all of the potential uses, you know, on Hawthorne Boulevard or in the area and which uses will bring you the highest tax base. We believe that's probably a good study for the city to do to understand when you modify your specific plans, what kind of uses you want or what kind of agreements you want to enter into. But in this particular case, you don't have to go through all of that for our particular project because we're already agreeing that we do not provide a high tax base with the particular use and that we are willing to compensate the city for that. And so we, you know, we know, we've been here many times before you. I mean, you've listened to our presentations. We've had many discussions with you and it's been, you know, more than two years that we have been going through this process with the city. We've done every study that the city has requested. If there's any additional studies that you want, we've stated that we were willing to do them. You know, we did a noise study that showed that the car wash is no, it's not any louder than Hawthorne Boulevard itself. It's actually quieter than the street. And we've done studies that shows that our cue- And we've done studies that shows that our queues are long enough that they're not going to back up. We're agreeing to have higher walls or other mitigation measures that you want, but we need you to consider this matter that's before you. We know that you've had some concerns about having a car wash on the site. If there's specific mitigations, you know, we can identify them, but a car wash is an allowed use in the specific plan. It requires a conditional use permit so that you, the city, have the opportunity to add conditions that might mitigate any impacts that you find, but we found that we're already mitigating any impacts. There were no specific environmental impacts at all caused by the use, and we are, you know, more than willing to modify the design to accommodate your request. And I just want to point out that you have to take an action on the matter that's before you, and the matter that's before you is our car wash. You know, it might be that you would rather have some really high-end restaurant here, but an applicant's allowed to bring before you any allowed or conditionally allowed use in the specific plan, and a car wash is one of those uses. And so it's the city council's obligation to identify whether or not, you know, we meet the findings that would be needed to support approval of this project. So you do have a resolution before you that shows that we meet all those findings. The resolution that the planning commission adopted denied this project solely because it was a housing project, they wanted a housing project and it was not a housing project. And we've already provided evidence that that's not a reason to deny our project. So, you know, let us know what your concerns are, let us know what we can do to make this car wash something that the city wants. But I can tell you that Tim Berger and his company are going to be very good to the community, and they really want to be a part of Longdale. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for that comment, request.
Hello. As a reminder, my name is Brad Giles. My family owns a property, and I'm the real estate agent that's been trying to lease the property over the last six years. It's already been said that our family's owned the property for over 70 years. We used to run, family ran lumberyard that helped build this city. It was brought up in the last council meeting that what was the best use for the property? And like Sherry pointed out, we've been trying for six years to find the best use for this and best tenant for this property. We had a Fortune 200 company, that use was denied by the city, and it's through that lengthy search that I can assure you that Mr. Berger and his business are the best tenants for this property. Another point that was brought up is that we already have a handful of car washes in the city. Well, there are also a lot of coffee shops in the city, there are also a lot of fast food restaurants in the city, and I don't see those businesses facing the same opposition as this applicant. Just because there's a proven demand for a particular business does not mean that that use should be denied because others already exist. Sherry pointed out some of the issues that I was going to go over, so I won't repeat those, but Mr. Berger and his family are trying to invest five to six million dollars into the city and this site, even though they received a letter of completion for their application back in September 24th, 2020. So over a year ago, they got a letter of completion for their application, and they're still here today trying to work with you and the city. If a development agreement is the only way the city council and city will approve the project, that will be between you and Mr. Berger, but we feel that Mr. Berger and his family have been through enough, are going to invest more than enough, and have proven they deserve to be a part of this community, and the city of Longdale will be better having them here. Sean Moore himself, before leaving, said, "As for the applicant, he was one of the best and finest applicants to work with in my career." We will not be forced to sell our land, that we know a mixed-use developer will not lease, and we know from six years of trying to get the best possible tenant for the property that this is the best use and operator for this site. This project needs to be approved, and frankly, should have been approved long ago. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate everything you do for this great city.
Thank you. I think we have some member of the public want to make comments on this.
Gary Adams again. I strongly oppose the council overruling the planning commission's decision to deny this application. In the first place, it was acknowledged by the first proponent speaker that it is not the highest and best use of this property. Contrary to the second speaker's comment that they couldn't do, or implication that they couldn't do any better than this, I think we need to follow the old adage, follow the money. He can get more money by leasing the property than by having it developed for multifamily use, and we all know we need more residential property in the city. As far as being a good owner for 70 years, I deny that too. The property sat empty for decades, and it's been somewhat of an eyesore, and it has not been properly taken care of. Yes, the city will lose taxes if this is approved. It should be noted that last Wednesday, the expansion of the car wash on Manhattan Beach Boulevard was approved by the planning commission, and the, I oppose that as well. We do not need another car wash. We've got plenty of car washes. It's not the best, highest and best use for the property, and it's already been previously denied. This is not new. It's been denied, they know it's been denied, and they've come back now repeatedly trying to overturn the denial. So this is not unusual, but again, I would ask you to follow the money and look at the truth. This is not the highest and best use, and it could be developed more appropriately as multifamily. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public? It was just one, okay. Okay, so let's bring it up to the diocese. We've heard the request from the applicant as well as a member of the public's concerns. Let's hear from the...
I have a question. Are we for sure going to get a report next meeting?
I do not, I do not know. I would have to talk with the city manager's office about that. If we don't have a report in hand next meeting, then at the next meeting, I would know when that report would be available so that we could set a final hearing after which there would be no more continuances. So if at the first meeting in December, we cannot finalize this matter, then at the first meeting in December, I'll know the date on which we can, and I'll ask for a continuance to that date, knowing that that'll be it. You won't have to deal with it anymore, the applicant won't have to deal with it anymore after that. But I don't know at this moment whether that report would be ready by the first meeting in December.
Anyone else have any concerns?
I'll just can, I mean, I'm ready to discuss it, but I think a majority of the council isn't. By just throwing it out there.
Yeah, because I'm still in the same position I was in two weeks ago, not having the, some type of study, some type of analysis on the economic impacts, whether it be an exhaustive or, you know, a briefing. I'm still in the same position. So I would, I would like to give it some time so that we can, can get the study in and hopefully do it on the September, by the first meeting in December. That would be my suggestion, because otherwise...
I personally would like to make a final decision first meeting in December. So if we could get that report, that would be great.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I agree with you, Robert. If we don't have it by December, what is it, third? December 6th, the meeting? Then maybe when he does get it, if it's still in December, we have a special meeting to decide it, because I don't want it to go into January, February. I want it, you know, done, let's get it over with.
Yeah.
But if we need a special meeting in December, we can call it.
If we need one, okay. Sounds good. Okay, that'd be the consensus of the council that we'll do our best to have it by December the 6th.
And so the hearing is formally continued to December 6th, and we'll have a full report for you then with wherever we are, and then as the mayor pro tem has said and councilwoman said, if we're not ready that night, then we'll have the date on which we will be ready to discuss.
Great, so that'll be the order. Thank you. Thank everyone who spoke in this matter. Next item on the agenda, let's see, item 10, Community Services Department refund.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. Pretty simple agenda item tonight. As you folks likely remember, the finance department spearheaded a master fee schedule project back in March and April, which the department has participated in. So the city, as of July 1st, 2021, has a new schedule of user fees and schedule of user and regulatory fees, also known as a master fee schedule in place once again as of July 1st. In that schedule of fees was a suggested increase in the class and program registration fees, so generally when we're talking about community services department programs, classes, things of that nature, we have a refund policy which was enacted originally by city council in 1995 and then revised in 2013. That's for contract classes, recreation programs, youth sports, facility reservations, everything that the community services department has to offer. The former fee was $5. If the registration, if the refund request qualifies, meaning if the refund request was made before the start of the second class, there's different types of timeframes involved, but that fee formally was $5. In the master fee schedule, a rate of $15 was suggested for the increase in the refund fee. Once again, if the, if the program qualifies, if the refund request qualifies. Not every single refund request qualifies for a refund. For example, if they request a refund, you know, past the second, the start of the second class for a contract class, or past the second weekend of games for a youth sports activity, then that would not be a refund request that qualifies. So that refund, once again, has gone to $15, and that master fee schedule, or once again, schedule of user and regulatory fees, fee was approved by city council when the master fee schedule was approved. There are a number of other changes that we've made to the refund policy, just really simple garden variety changes, which basically reflect the way the department operates today, with more online registrations, third-party registration systems, some things needed to be changed, and some things needed to be clarified, but nothing really is, I can review those if council would like, but however, I didn't plan on doing that. So outside of the $15 refund request fee going from five to $15, we also have one other that's semi-impactful, and that's regarding facility reservations. The facility reservation refund policy changed as well, and that is on page two of the staff report, and I'll just briefly review that. No later than 30 days before the reservation date, the applicant can get, the payee actually can get a 100% refund minus $15. Between 15 and 30 days before the rental date, 50% of the refund can be refunded to the payee, also with a $15 processing fee. And if a facility reservation fee, facility reservation is canceled, 15 days or fewer before the reservation date, no refund date, no refund is provided, and there's no city processing fee. So these are two of the suggestions that were made, you know, in the new master fee schedule, as we choose to call it right now, and it's a very simple item, as I mentioned before. The legal review has been completed. The city attorney's office has reviewed Resolution CC dot 2111 dash 048, amending city council policy 28 dash 95, revising the administrative fee for processing community services department class and program refunds. And two, the city attorney has also reviewed council policy 2895, which again includes other simple revisions. There is no fiscal impact, there's going to be no cost to the city. The cost will generally be to the, those refunding, requesting a refund, and we're projecting that, you know, usually about when we're operating on a full service level at the community center, all programs are going, we usually see about a half dozen refund requests per quarter. So we're really looking at maybe 20, historically speaking, of course, 20 to 24 refunds throughout the entire year, so there's no real fiscal impact to the city, very mild fiscal impact to, to the residents and the people registering for classes. Staff recommends that the city council, A, adopt Resolution number 2111 dash 048, amending city council policy 2895, revising the administrative fee for processing community services department class and program refunds, and B, approve changes to council policy 2895, the community services department refund policy. That concludes staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions that I can.
Thank you for that report. Are there any questions of the report?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Michael, let's say, let's use the Senior Travel Club for instance. Let's say we have a event going on, you know, Senior Travel Club, those are all farts like I am on this trip. Let's say the night before, one of the members that were going passed away, and a family member tries to get a refund, are they still eligible? Because over here it says, oh, the eligible for is administrative fee.
We would honor that.
Okay.
You know, if it can be proven that it is a true family member, you know, we may request some type of proof along the way, but we've never faced that situation before, but we always want to be reasonable and look at each case on a case basis.
Okay.
But that could happen, yes.
Yeah, that could happen. That's it. Anyone else have any questions? So what is the pleasure of this body concerning this item?
Well, if there's no addition or subtraction, I'll make a motion to accept.
Mayor pro tem, just, Mr. Mayor, just in case the public has any comment to offer.
Okay, is there anyone in the, from the public willing to speak on this item? Seeing none, what is that?
A motion to approve Resolution 2111 dash 048 and approve the policy change 28 dash 95.
Okay.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, so that motion's been made by Quavis and seconded by Kearney. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none with the council, please vote.
For item number 10, the motion passes.
Thank you, madam. Item number 11, City Council Standing Committee Actions. This is a recommendation to form a homelessness issues committee. Let me see, is that the?
The standing, right.
Would that be the name of the committee? Yeah. Yeah, that would be the, I guess the name of the committee would be homeless issues committees. This would be a standing committee, which means it will, would be continuous jurisdiction and subject to the Brown Act, and with the whole idea, as Councilwoman Quavis has suggested, addressing homelessness issues here in the city. And with that, unless, pretty self-explanatory, unless we want to expound upon it, pretty self-explanatory, I'd like to appoint two members of that subcommittee, and I'm sure there's one that would like to volunteer, and it seemed like there's another one that would like to volunteer.
Me.
So it sounds like we have a buy-in to volunteers from Councilwoman Quavis and Councilwoman Bernadette Suarez. With that being the case, unless you want to arm wrestle for it, at this point, I appoint Quavis and Suarez to the homelessness issues subcommittee. Maybe we'll come up with another title for it, but we'll go with that for now, you know, because that, yeah.
Unsheltered.
We will go with that for now. I'm assuming we won't have to bring it back for any form of action if we just changed the name. Is there any discussion on the matter? Any discussion on the motion?
No.
Okay. I guess I should officially have a motion, even though we have the two that I'm appointing just to ratify it.
That means I get to vote, or I get to second?
There you go.
You've got to be quiet, I remember.
Okay, so who's going to make the motion? Quavis?
No, I'll make the motion.
Okay, the motion's been made by Mr. Pat Kearney that we ratified the mayor's appointment, Suarez and Quavis.
I'm seconding it.
Seconded by Hoffman, Gorman. Is there any discussion on it? Is there any discussion on it?
Oh, Lord.
CNN with the council, please vote.
I caved around now. Did it come up? No? There it is. For item number 11, the motion passes.
All righty, thank you. Next item on the agenda is items from the council members, mayors and council members on reports of attendance, anything they would like to share. Let's start with councilwoman Suarez.
I don't recall any, for some reason I can't remember the past two weeks, but I did want to point out that the Field of Honor for Veterans Day was very, very beautiful and it was nice, some of the flags. I did enjoy seeing honoring those unnamed soldiers that never made it back. And then I also did want to say a heartfelt thank you to the families of those members. A lot of times it's not just the serving part, the coming back and the trauma that the family members also have to cope with. So it was very beautiful and I look forward to it every year. With that, I'll pass it along.
Thank you. Councilwoman Quavis.
I want to say thank you to staff for putting the flags out there during Fields of Honor. I would like to keep it a little bit longer, the flags out there. They were up on Thursday and by Saturday morning they were down. I think maybe we should honor them all weekend if possible, if it falls on a weekday, that would be really nice. I also met with Julian and my guests regarding the parks. William Green got hit with graffiti this weekend, really bad. Every piece of equipment had graffiti. So they will be taking a little trip, hopefully tomorrow to check on that. There's some equipment that also needs a little touch up, so hopefully they could get that fixed for us. Besides that, that, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hoffman-Gorman.
I also not only want to say, if you didn't get a chance to see the Field of Honor, you missed out on something absolutely goosebumping. You couldn't walk by it without feeling, that feeling that, that makes us all proud of those gentlemen and women that served and the lives that were lost and the families that were all involved in it. I also want to thank staff for the most beautiful presentation that they did of the event and it is still on YouTube and I grabbed it and put it even on my Facebook page because I thought it was absolutely outstanding. So kudos to staff on the presentation that they did. I'm sure they worked long and hard. I did have one thing that I wanted to bring up tonight. I would like to know, in community services, can we start talking about or thinking about opening up the community service building to start bringing back some classes or what that would look like or trying to see if we can begin doing something over there and utilizing the building and letting the, the citizens have it to some extent?
I'm certain that between the director and myself, we can bring back a report at your next meeting outlining what the current county restrictions would be in terms of what people would have to do within the building and then what it would mean operationally for his department. And I would be happy to help him with that to whatever extent he, he needs my help and I think we can bring that back at the next meeting. Director, would you agree with that?
I would, yes. We need to get some clarifications on the LA County guidelines, specifically vaccination versus non-vaccination. There are a lot of community centers that have been open for some time, some running abbreviated programs, some fully wide open. Not many are fully wide open, but we can do a check on that first thing tomorrow and get a solid clarification on that.
If it can't be done quickly, I'm thinking towards the beginning of the year. So if it can't, if we can't make it for the next two weeks, I sure understand going out an extra one, but...
Staff has informally discussed February 1st as a date and also March. You know, it's, it's tricky. But I agree with, with Mr. Murphy that we need to really get solid on the, the guidelines and restrictions that LA County may have in place.
Thank you.
May I take it back on your...
Yes, ma'am.
Also, Mike, I know if we bring back the community center, you're going to need staff. So if you could add the cost of staff and how many staff members you'll be needing for the reopening.
Absolutely. Thank you, councilwoman.
All righty, let's hear from Mr. Pat Kearney.
All righty. Rhonda, I agree with you about the community center. I know Mike had some classes outside, a couple ballet classes or three or four ballet that was in the parking lot and was well attended. They needed more chairs out there because parents all there. But I agree with you, we need to open up sooner than later. And then also I attended a Lobby Trust and Oversight Committee meeting via Zoom with the city manager and I attended the, the high school of El Camino Village, Losinger, Losinger. Their ribbon cutting ceremony and I loved the appetizers.
Well, there's a whole story. There's a whole story to go with that.
And I also attended, I mean, came by and saw the Field of Honor and it was great. And, you know, I'm like the grinch, I have a little heart, but when I see that, my heart grows. And with that, that's under you.
That, that's good to, that's good to know. So I'm just gonna have a flag lapel, so the next time you gripe, I can just point to it right here. Okay, I do also agree with the, the community center. I actually had a conversation with the, the city attorney over the weekend about this same matter as a couple of residents had, spoke to me about this and actually while I was talking to the city attorney, a resident saw that I was walking around and she asked me about it, particularly the seniors, you know, when, when we was going to have the seniors or what have you. So I did have a conversation with the, the city attorney regarding, on this issue as well. So in addition to that, the young lady I was talking to on the phone, she, her focus was primarily outdoor sports and the lack of outdoor sports opportunities here in the city of Landale, whereas other cities are resuming their outdoor sports activities. You've got to sign all kinds of waivers and all this kind of stuff, which is to be expected. And so she was concerned that Landale and she also mentioned Hawthorne is in the same position, has not resumed outdoor sports. And so my, one of my questions for the city attorney was when can we resume outdoor sports or activities? And so that goes hand in hand with the community center, opening up the community center. So I wanted to add that, that we all are in agree, in agreements that we should get this started as fast as we can, as soon as the law will allow and soon as staffing will allow or what have you. So I wanted to add that. Also wanted to follow up on the youth, the youth advisory committee. I know I spoke about this in a meeting or two ago about the youth advisory committee is not meeting. At the time, I suggested that perhaps they can meet over Zoom, like a lot of other bodies are meeting over Zoom, but now that things are opening up, I don't see why they can't meet safely in person if that's more advantageous. It probably is for the, the young folks to meet in person rather than on Zoom. But if not, for some reason, they should be meeting at least via Zoom because we don't want to rob them of the opportunity that's provided by being a member of the Yak. You don't want them to simply say, I was a member, okay, what did you do? Oh, I didn't do anything. There was no meeting. And it's not really, it's not even a whole year, it's within the, the, the school calendar, calendar year. So as soon as we can get these young folks meeting, I think it would be more advantageous for us. One of the issues, of course, we want to hear from them on is the, the pending teen center. I want to make sure that they're involved in that and they weigh in on that, the teen center, what kind of activities should be at the teen center so that it's reflective of the needs of young folks and not, what did you call yourself, refer to yourself?
Your age?
No, it was your age. Old farts?
Old farts.
Yeah. So that it, so rather than old farts dictate what should be in the, the teen center, we want to hear from the youth, you know, so they're fully involved in that process. And I think that's something definitely they could weigh in on, on now, during these times. So if we can get that underway, I would really appreciate it. I also had the opportunity to, to stop by the Fields of Honors as well. Spectacular. Every year it's spectacular. Public Works does an outstanding job of displaying the flags. When I came, there was a couple of families there, you know, taking pictures and so that was really outstanding. I want to thank the Public Works and all those involved for putting that display together. That same day, this was actually on Veterans Day, I had the opportunity to attend the U.S. Vets Ceremony. They're in Inglewood, outside, outside of Inglewood, one of the biggest vets housing complex, you know, in the area. And they put on a pretty big celebration ceremony every year. So I had the opportunity to attend that as well on Veterans Day. And last but not least, I also attended the groundbreaking dedication and ribbon cutting of Losinger High School. And that, that was, that was, yeah, that was, that was a great event. The school just looked, if you haven't had the opportunity to pass by it, I mean, the school looks fabulous, you know? They've done a wonderful job on the school, even inside, of course, is, is absolutely, it, it, they, they did an outstanding job and right now they're also working on the fields, right? So you may see a lot of construction going over there, so they're working on the fields and so they should be finishing with that, I think in 2023, something like that, 2023 or something like that, they should be finished with those fields, but outstanding job there. And that's all I have. And with that, we will close comments from, let's see, there's anything we need to, need to hear on the city manager's report?
I, I don't really have any report from the city manager. I, I do just want to let the mayor and council know that your municipal services department, Mr. Reyes, are every bit as involved in the Field of Honor as Public Works and so I want to give kudos to them as well.
Thank you for bringing that to my, thank you for bringing that to my attention. Absolutely, kudos. Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
It's lucky Mr. Reyes had a little goatee going on in the YouTube, is that true?
Yeah.
Okay. You look good, you look good.
He's kind of hesitated right there to say, yes, sir. Okay, with that, we do have a, a number of closed sessions, four closed sessions tonight. And with that, I'm going to ask the city attorney to give us a provision of each closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council will now adjourn into closed session for four items, under Government Code 54957.6 to confer with the labor negotiator, under Government Code 54956.9 D2 and D3 for one matter of anticipated litigation, facts and circumstances currently unknown to the potential plaintiff, under 54957B for a performance evaluation of the city manager and under 54957B, the potential appointment of an acting city manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We will stand and adjourn to closed session.
I'm going to ask the city attorney to give the report of the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With respect to the conference with labor negotiator item, no reportable action was taken. With respect to the item of anticipated litigation, no reportable action was taken. With respect to the city manager performance evaluation, the city council is placing the, is placing Mr. Chun, the city manager, on administrative leave effective immediately. And with respect to the public employee appointment, Raylet Felton has been appointed the acting city manager. That is my report, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, for that report. It is time to adjourn. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the city council will be held at 6:30 PM on Monday, December the 6th, 2021, in these chambers. It is now 8:40 and this meeting is adjourned.